Hi, I'm Jeremy Frogsby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video-on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for August 13, 2024. I called to the order to this meeting at 7:30 PM. So please stand up for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's due to the republic of the world to stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next roll call, please, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
He's late.
Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dansler Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbs.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado is absent with excuse. Alder Buffadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item number four. It's public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. And tonight, we have a new appointment, a mayoral appointment. Logan Reistag for the Transportation and Transient Commission is a term that is going to expire on April 15, 2025. He's shortened due to a vacancy. So Logan is here tonight. So Logan, you know, you can introduce to the council, tell us why, you know, why you're willing to serve in the Transportation Commission, and so we can learn a little bit more about you.
Certainly. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the members of the Common Council for considering me for this position. My name is Logan Reigstad. I am a resident of District 3. I live in Swan Creek. I've lived in Pittsburgh two years this month. It's the longest I've lived in one place since I was 18. So I'm very excited to be setting up roots and calling Pittsburgh home for the long term. A little bit of my background is I've spent about the past eight years or so working in communications, primarily working in journalism and a variety of roles in local TV stations all over the country. About the past year or so, I've worked in higher education for the university, taking a lot of really complex situations and topics and policies and breaking them down to understand. So certainly, I've spent a lot of time in rooms just like this one, synthesizing all that complex information, learning very quickly, trying to get a sense of not only the policies, but also who the movers and the shakers are, and building those relationships. That's all very important to me. One of the things I've always had a strong interest in, and really even since I was a kid, is having, really seeing our built environment, how we get around. And I can even give a recent example of that interest. Just yesterday, I was walking around UW campus because I saw on Instagram that Metro Transit had one of those articulated buses out for testing. Sadly, I did not see it, and I stood at the bus stop and waited for quite a while, but I'm sure I will catch it hopefully very soon out on the road. As a Pittsburgh resident, I use just about every mode of transportation that we have. I am a regular rider of Route 65 to and from campus. I ride my bike all over our bike paths. I walk all over town. And of course, I own a vehicle and drive throughout our city and far beyond as well. I think that really gives me a good experience as to what's working, what isn't working in all of our different transportation systems. Certainly cognizant of the fact that we are a very quickly growing community, and I want to make sure that we provide opportunities to those who don't drive to get around. The number, I believe, I heard cited at TTC most recently was something like 40% of our residents don't own or don't use a personal motor vehicle. So I want to make sure that we're thinking well about how everyone can get around, everything from climate effects, everything from health effects, supporting our businesses, making sure our seniors can get to the senior center. All of those things really reflect on transit and transportation. And I want to make sure that as we look forward to the next 40, 41 years of our city's future, that it's just as bright as it has been the last 40 years. For that reason, I'm interested in serving the city in this role, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so first I need to...
I'll move approval.
Okay. Gabriela.
Second.
Second by Alder Jetzer. Okay, any comment, question from any member?
I'll just make a quick comment.
Okay, yeah.
I've spoken with Logan about his interest in TTC, and it's, I think he'll be a great fit for the committee. It was nice to see you there at the last meeting to sit and watch, and we're excited to have you. It's nice to have somebody that regularly rides the bus. I don't think we've had that on the wild. We've had people that have used bus service in the past, but no one that's currently a bus user. So I think that experience in particular, along with the breadth of the different transportation options you use, will be a nice perspective for the committee.
Okay, any other comments, question, no? Okay, all of us in favor of appointing Logan Reistag for the Transportation and Transient Commission, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. So welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, I open to the public hearing and ordinance 2024-0-07 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-07-24, adopting the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP and Text on Page 4 to 17 to incorporate a new medium-high-density residential land use category, and amend the text on Page 4 to 17 of that plan for the high-density residential future land use category. So do we have anyone on the chamber? Okay, he has seen no one. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay. So next, we have some members registered for non-agenda items. So this is what I want to go. I have only one form, so if you want to speak, you need to fill out the form and bring it to me. I want to call you to the microphone, and you have three minutes. Okay, so I'm gonna call Andy Lager. He wishes to speak about the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan.
And I have a seat right here?
Yeah, you sit there, and you have three minutes.
And when do we start the three minutes?
Go ahead, just once you introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, great. My name's Andy Lager, lifelong Pittsburgh resident. Nice to see you. Council President Gabrielle Gerhardt, nice to see you. We met at the, at the Meet Your Alders, Mr. Dansler, thanks for listening to us. And Mr. Wheeler, you represent District 4. Nicole, thanks for your time. You've been amazing. Just want to say thank you, and especially to Chad Brecklin. We've had some great conversations. Nice to meet you, Jettzler. Just reaching out, had a couple of quick topics here. I invited some of you. You, at the meeting, you said yes, you'd like to do a Greenfield Neighborhood walkthrough. I'm inviting you to that. Please, please come. So let's set a time before the next, the next council meeting on the 27th. If something like that can happen. We just need 20 or 30 minutes to see what we're talking about here. That ties into the Greenfield Neighborhood, the meeting on the 31st. Did, Mr. Wheeler, did you get a chance to watch that? Or Mr. Dansler, did you watch the videos? Okay, you have. You watched the videos, you saw the people, you heard their voices. So if I quiz you sometime, you'll know what some people talked about. So that's good to know. We've set up a meeting with Mike Zimmerman with City Planning and Deanna Schmidt. We've got a meeting coming up there to talk about some unique things with land, the stormwater water issues. This should be fresh in your mind then. Mr. Jay Allen, did you, are you familiar with the stormwater issues that are happening? If you haven't, take a look into that. A lot of stuff happening there. Just a lot of stuff to talk about. That was a big meeting. We were really surprised about a lot of things that took place, from the planning, the maps. You've heard us. Let's just hope a lot of the comments and things don't get buried in a box somewhere and sit somewhere. You know, I'm a lifer here, work for the City of Pittsburgh Parks, got a lot of interest in here as an appraiser for 24 years. I've driven all these streets. I've seen everything. I've been down around a lot. I just want to thank you for your time. Really hope you can come and walk with us and meet some of the people. And, you know, you've heard it, just see and breathe it, walk it together, whatever. Take a look. Thank you.
Andy, anyone else wish to speak? This is your time. No? Thank you. So next, we move to the consent agenda.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay.
And I'd like to remove the minutes.
The minutes? Okay, where are the minutes? Okay. All of us in favor of the consent agenda without the July 23 minute, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, the motion carries. So, okay, Gabriela.
The last page of the minutes for the roll call vote. Alder Allen's last name is spelled wrong. So just a quick correction, and I'll move approval with that small change.
Second.
All of us in favor of approving the minutes from July 23 with the changes made by Alder Gerhardt, say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Oh, sorry, Dave, the motion carries. Okay. So next, we move to the Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. Got a number of events to talk about, and then also a couple of project updates. I'll try to go in chronological order for your calendars. First one is tomorrow, the Chamber's Business After Hours event is being held at 4:30 PM at the Great Dane. Also tomorrow, August 14th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the Police Department will be hosting its Community Night Out in McKee Farms Park. On Friday during the lunch hour, I would encourage you all, if you have some time, to visit our senior center. From 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, they're having a brat lunch that is open to the public, and it's $5. The McKee Farms Park Tennis Court reconstruction has completed, and they are open for use. There'll be a ribbon cutting on Friday, August 16th, at 3:30 PM. Also on Friday, late afternoon, there'll be a graduation at the fire station for our Latino youth academy. That is an all-week-long program in which Latino youth are able to observe and learn more about professions and public safety. The Department of Administration from the state of Wisconsin annually in August provides municipalities with their estimated population as of January 1st, 2024. So our population, according to the Department of Administration, has been estimated at 35,125 residents.
Are we planning to change the sign?
I don't know if we're able to change the signs based upon the DOA estimate. So I can't answer that for certain. The restoration in pavement marking are all that remains from our road resurfacing projects. The road resurfacing project is different from our street maintenance project, which involves crack filling and chip sealing. You see a number of streets that are waiting for their top coats to go on. That street maintenance project is about 50% complete throughout the city, and we're working with the contractor on completing the remaining 50%. You may have noticed as you came in the door, the front counter remodel project is nearly complete. There's really just a few punch list items remaining. I think that space has turned out to be a very good-looking space in its remodeled state, and it's been very well received from a staff perspective for helping with efficiency there at the counter. And then finally, the last item I have is just want to thank Tracy Oldenburg and the rest of our city's staff and poll workers for their efforts, not only today with the partisan primary, but also just in general. That takes several weeks in advance of the actual event to put the planning together. And then if you happen to be around City Hall the day of and the day before, there's a lot of trucks moving election equipment to the various different polling locations. So I just want to thank all of our staff and poll workers that do such a great job with our elections. Thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that. We also did have, the Department of Revenue has put out its preliminary estimate for our net new construction. We use our net new construction to determine, one of the factors that helps us determine what the city's available budget capacity will be next year. We were pleased to learn from the Department of Revenue that their preliminary number was about one percentage point higher than what staff had been estimating. That will equate to approximately $200,000 in additional budget capacity that could be available. So we'll get more deeply into the operating budget as we go along. Staff has submitted their preliminary budget requests. The Mayor, Misty, and Deputy City Administrator Adam Sear and I all sat with our department heads today to go over their preliminary budgets, and we'll be continuing to review those over the next several weeks. And then the mayor's operational budget will be released in mid-September. So, any questions?
Okay, so next is Mayor's Report. So a couple of things that I want to share with you. So as Chad mentioned, it's budget season. So we spent the whole day today with the preliminary, the first draft to the budget, the presentation of the head of the department of the budget to me and Chad and Misty and the rest. So I want to say this is something like this, I don't know how many, like 400 pages, but fun, fun. So the other thing I want to mention that I attended last week to Mayor's Innovation Project Conference in Knoxville, Tennessee. More than, I would say between 80 and 90 mayors from different states attended that conference. It's a great opportunity to networking with other mayors from other municipalities. Some of the municipalities are our side, smaller or bigger. Knoxville is a, I was surprised, is a beautiful city, 196,000 people on the Tennessee River with a UT University, so growing. You know, some of the concerts that we have here in this community is not only happening in Pittsburgh. You know, the housing crisis is happening everywhere in the, in the United States. So I was able to participate in a couple of panels. You know, we are learning about what other municipalities are doing regarding, you know, housing. We talk about urban connectivity and transformative place-making. We talk about climate change, creating an affordable housing ecosystem. And then we have a couple of good speakers that came to the conference. And there was a section that they call showcase, that every mayor, you need to participate. You have an innovative idea in your community. You have three minutes to present to the, to the rest of the mayor. So it was great. They give you only three minutes. And then I got a couple of ideas that I want to share with you. Also, I brought a lot of material that I want to slowly share it with you. I sent you last night a document about parks, the 10-minute walking, you know, park program. So I want to share all the information that I brought. And I was also, there were five mayor from other Wisconsin municipality attending, so it was great to get to know other mayor from different parts of Wisconsin. So this is what I did last week, and then I, you know, I also, we attended to the groundbreaking from the hub, Tracy Way. So I want to say thank you very much for everyone that attended. We have a good noise. We have three TV channels that came. We were on the news for, I would say, like, night news, morning news, so it was great. And then Sullivan Construction Company was awarded with the, with the construction of the hub. This park, as I mentioned before, is going to be completed in August 2025, and is fully funded by Parks Dedication Fee. So let me see, I am looking at my notes. We are working with the police facility. They're going to be, you know, when we approve tonight the resolution, then I think Jim Wheeler is going to participate in those, I don't know, the weekly meeting or monthly meeting, I don't know. You need to talk to Chad, okay? He's going to be representing in those meetings, and so it's going to bring an update in every council meeting to see where we are with the police facility. The other thing that I want to say, I participated in the Greenfield Neighborhood Open House, and I hope that you all watched the meeting to understand, you know, to understand from where the neighbors are coming from with the Greenfield, what are the feedback, concern. I continue meeting with business leaders. Next is, I'm going to meet with the COO Bank, I think, next week. I already met with a couple of farmers, I know the business owner. The other thing that we are going to talk in the community of the whole, at the end of August, is we're going to have an update from EMS. Chad is putting together that, so we have a presentation, and we are going to ask for your feedback on some topics. We are, continue working with the union negotiation for fire and police. We have a couple of meetings that are coming soon at the beginning of September. And also, we have another ribbon cutting next week, August 21st, is Kamika at 3:00 PM. So everyone is invited. I hope the Alders from the district come to this event. And the other big event that we are happening beside the one that Chad mentioned is we have our Agora Art Fair that is coming on Saturday, August 17, from 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM. They are still looking for volunteers, so people are watching. They are still looking for volunteer for that event. I volunteer every year, and it's a great opportunity to network with, you know, your neighbors, you know, help, and this is a great event. What else? Let me see. And you mentioned everything, the Pittsburgh Chamber, tennis court, yeah, tomorrow, community out. I invite everyone tomorrow to come out to the Community Night Out. This is a great event organized by our police department with others' agency and our other department from the city, and, you know, it's, every year is getting bigger and bigger, you know what I mean? So bring your kids, your family, and friends. This is another way to celebrate our community. So that's it for tonight. Any question, comment to me? No? Okay. So next, we move to item eight in the agenda, Commission and Committees Report, and we will start with Plan Commission.
Yeah, I will move approval of ordinance 2024-0-07 and Plan Commission Resolution, PCR-07-24, adopting the Spring 2024 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP, and Text on Page 4 to 17 to incorporate a new medium-high-density residential MHDR land use category, and amend the text of Page 4 to 17 of that plan for the high-density residential HDR future land use category. And this was postponed from May 14th.
Second.
So first second? Jay, okay. Okay, Gabriela, can you explain this?
Yeah, so this is what we discussed back in May 14th, and the discussion centered around whether we should change the units per acre, the high end, up to 20 units per acre. This amendment would basically create a new category. Right now, we have low, low-density, medium-density, and high-density. Thank you. Low, medium, and high. But that high obviously goes up to infinity units, which when people are trying to create kind of more small-scale, middle, what we call middle housing, like townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, kind of smaller scale, but important housing, that housing is not high-density really in nature. And so creating a medium-high-density category allows us to actually create a land use plan map that more accurately reflects how the city wants to plan and includes that middle missing, that missing middle housing that is really important. I personally am an owner of a townhouse, so I love that style of home, and I know many people seek that type of housing. So that's what the medium-high-density. Between council last time, the Plan Commission did take a look at it. One of the things that is important to note is that Deanna's team had a chance to look at it and said she was comfortable with the change to 20 units per acre on the high end. The Plan Commission was still concerned about making sure that the, that the category, that the range keeps, that that reflects the middle housing. And Deanna's team said yes, the Plan Commission was still concerned, so they referred it back to council and didn't pass the 20 units per acre. But, yeah, anything that you want to add, Deanna?
I want to clarify something because I think the resolution that we have in front of us is from '09 to '15. It's not '09 to '20.
I thought we amended it last time.
Yes, but here it was, it says Plan Commission approved, and Plan Commission approved '09 to '15, so I don't know.
It is confusing because the ordinance document that's in the packet, Ordinance 2024-0-07, has the change from 15 units to 20 units.
Okay.
That's what it, that's what it says in this document. This is in the packet. It's Ordinance 2024-0-07.
Deanna, is there anything you would like to say?
I can jump in here to maybe give a little bit more context. So the first Plan Commission Resolution went up to 15 dwelling units per acre for medium-high. Plan Commission did approve that and then recommended approval of the ordinance that would come to council with up to 15. Plan, council did not support the 15 and said it should go to 20. And so we took back to Plan Commission a new Plan Commission Resolution that was up to 20, amended the ordinance per council's direction up to 20. And Plan Commission did not approve their resolution, their Plan Commission Resolution up to 20. So that one died on the table. What is before you this evening then is the ordinance, which does go up to 20 for the medium-high residential future land use. And then for the high-density, it would start at 20 and then go up to infinity.
So where, I am trying to figure out where it's safe from '09 to '20 here. Which page?
It's in the, well, it's in the actual ordinance. It's in the ordinance...
Can you say a page?
I don't look at it that way.
225 of 260 or Page 17.
Of 18.
17?
It has a red line version.
Okay.
I pull up the individual documents from the website so that I don't have to deal with 200 pages.
One at a time, people?
Deanna, so there is no Plan Commission Resolution that's been approved, correct?
Not at 20. Plan Commission only approved up to 15.
So does that create a problem?
Okay.
Do you want me to take this one, Deanna?
Chad, can I explain this?
Yeah.
It does create a bit of a problem. The city attorney has been consulted on this, and there can be some measure of a gray area between who has the authority, that being Common Council or Plan Commission. I believe the last comprehensive plan was updated to reflect that the Common Council has the final say, but the statute may not necessarily be abundantly clear that that is the case. So the city attorney has reviewed this, said there could be some sort of problem with this disagreement, but that's where we're at at this point.
But I want to mention that the North Stoner Prairie Neighborhood Plan was, you know, was approved by the, with the language that is in the Comprehensive Plan. Because we had the same issue with Plan Commission and council at that time. And finally, Plan Commission, the council override Plan Commission power and that. So, so this is what is in the com-plan, the language.
Well, I guess I'm asking more of a process question. Do we need an approved Plan Commission Resolution in order for this ordinance to be enforceable?
We don't believe so, but it is possible that there could be a challenge to it. I mean, whether that's likely or not remains to be seen.
Okay, but the other thing that we can... Okay, but the other thing that we can, someone, because you were the person who pushed for the 20.
You betcha.
Okay. So, but then if you don't feel, we need to move forward with this.
Well, I want to know that whatever we pass is going to hold up.
Yeah, but I want to tell you that if we make some, one of you can put an amendment here and say nine to 15 and we, you know, we are consistent with plan and move forward.
Gabriela, can you tell us what the Plan Commission's issue is with 20 units instead of 15?
And to add to that, can you please explain the T4? There was like reference to the T4 code?
So the T4 is a transect in smart code and the original idea to change it to have the high end be 15 is to align with the T4 transect. Now, smart code is also older in nature, like it was created back in 2000, early 2000s?
2009.
2009, okay.
Okay, one at a time, one at a time?
So that's what T4 is representing and that's the reason why. And that's, I think that was Plan Commission liked the consistency between the two. Plan Commission also wanted to make sure that the medium-high density does not, that whatever the range is, it stays in the character of the middle housing so that the high end is not really getting into high density. Now, when you look literally, I mean, I'm on the Wikipedia and so Wikipedia is not perfect, but the Wikipedia said building types for middle housing typically have a unit density in the range of 16 to 30 units per acre.
Right.
So that's actually higher than the nine to 15, which is interesting. But, so I think the Plan Commission was just more comfortable keeping it in line with the smart code and that they, and I think the overall arching point of wanting to make sure that is truly reflects missing middle and not high density. Deanna did make the point that, I think also the concern was it going above three stories. If you're gonna put a four-story kind of apartment building next to a single-family home, that would obviously probably create a lot of unhappiness. But I think the whole point of having this density is so that you can use it to kind of like create a transition between single-family homes and maybe some higher density. So it gives you that change. And Deanna said that ultimately when we approve these things, it's about making sure that it fits in the character of the neighborhood. So you're not gonna put a four-story building right next to, I don't know, you know what I mean? Like it's, the process involves more analysis than just the straight units per acre, so.
Yes, and then Jim. Okay. Go ahead, yeah.
Well, one, so we are, this is to create a classification on our comprehensive plan. This is not a zoning classification. And, you know, if we're going to, when we zone something as smart code, that's a very, I mean, that's usually a larger area. We're not gonna, we're not gonna zone one acre as smart code. So whether there is a, whether this lines up with a smart code transects, to me is just not a relevant factor because it's two completely independent things we're talking about. So I don't really understand how the Plan Commission is thinking about this.
Jim?
Yeah, my only comment is, you know, a developer looking at this and it seems like we're not consistent, 15 to 20 is not a good thing. So where are we at? I mean, are we gonna say that the council has the last word or is it the Plan Commission?
If the body acts tonight and passes something, then the council is indicating that the council has the last word.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And it happened in the past, so this is.
I want to know.
Okay. So the other thing is, we need to understand is, I think, you know, the 15, I know that we can go with this medium-high-density higher, or no, some of you would prefer to go higher, but also we need to look at who we are as a community, you know? So we are talking about, if we are a metropolis, so we have like 200 people, a more urban area, we can say, yeah, we can, we can increase this medium-high up. But also we need to look as a community. We are, yeah, we have some urban area and rural, but I think we need to, if we are gonna do the change, let's do it gradually, you know what I mean? Let's, let's be, what is the characteristic of our urban area, you know what I mean? And then I think we can start at 15 and next year, when we revise the comp plan, you know, we'll have a deeper conversation about if we want to change this, you know what I mean? So that one is my position on this. Yes, Nicole?
I think I just want to add to that, whenever I see that a committee that referred it to us, then we sent it back and they unanimously disagreed with us again. And that committee is made up of both elected officials but also people from the community. It does give me just a little bit of pause and I think it's an important pause to say like, okay, why did they unanimously disagree with us? Because at the end of the day, I do think council, we are elected and that committee is not all elected. So I think at the end of the day, it's what we state, but I'm with you in that I get a little pause in terms of like, why did Plan Commission think that way? I did have a question. Jay, something you said confused me, so I was hoping maybe someone could set, just maybe dive into that deeper. What is the point of this designation if we're not gonna zone anything as it? Like, I'm losing the thread on.
We can ask, maybe Deanna can answer that question?
Yeah, I'd love a like procedural answer on that.
Yeah, so our future land use map and our future land use categories help to determine the allowable zoning districts. As things stand today, what this would mean is setting a different range mostly for planned development districts. I think that's where this would fall mostly today. It certainly could have an influence in our medium-density zoning districts too.
Deanna, that.
Oh, Bill, sorry, Bill is first.
Yeah, I guess, I don't mind having a designation here for the nine to 15. What I don't want to do is associate the word high with that designation. I mean, if we can call this like medium plus or something, because, I mean, seriously, 15 units per acre should not be associated with high density. And if we, if we name it that and then we decide in the future we need another designation that goes up to, you know, 40 or something, what are we gonna call that?
Okay, okay, so Jay, and then please make your point because I'm gonna call to the order of this, okay?
I think there's, there's a lot of hand wringing and just general upset about what these things are. So I live in a three-story apartment building. My apartment building has 54 units in it and it's on 1.2 acres, so if you do the math, it's about 45 dwelling units per acre. So even with the, and I don't consider my building to be high-density. And that's, and it's at double the density of what we're talking about here. So I agree with you 100% Bill, that calling, even calling 20 dwelling units per acre high-density is not, it just isn't. It just simply isn't high-density.
It's medium-high-density, medium.
Well, okay, we can, we can throw that in there, but I don't even know that I would call it that. To me, it's just, it's just standard suburban development. It's like if we built a bunch, if we built on that, on that one-acre parcel, if we built four eight-unit apartment buildings, eight-unit apartment buildings are pretty typical, that'd be 32 dwelling units per acre. And you look anywhere, you look all over the place in Madison and you will see streets that are lined with eight-unit apartment buildings. So I, to me, when we get into this, this idea of density as if it's some sort of a bad thing, it's really bothersome to me. So I, I don't know. I'm gonna vote in favor of this because I think the 20 units is the right number. I actually would probably go to 25 or 30, but, you know, if the Plan Commission came unglued up over 15, I don't even know what they would do if we threw a bigger number back out there, but. And the bottom line is that if we have, if we have larger areas, we do that, we generally do those as PDD. So you have to have a minimum of five acres to do a PDD and then we can do anything we want. We don't have to conform to any of these things. The only, the issue with PDD is basically every time you do a PDD, you're inventing a new zoning code for each one of those districts, which is fine. I don't have a problem with that, but it does create a lot of work for the Plan, for the planning department, so. And hopefully, you know, when we have these projects come in, they'll be on things larger than five acres, so. But anyhow, I think we should approve this and be done with it and if somebody wants to sue us, I mean, I don't know who would have standing to sue us over a classification we put in the comprehensive plan, but if someone wants to, they can, I guess.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, a question for Deanna, just a point of clarification. This whole time when we're talking about dwelling units per acre, this is net dwelling units per acre, not gross dwelling units per acre, right? So this is strictly the plots of land.
Yeah, we figure this at net.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I want to tell you, I feel comfortable with 15 and 20, you know, because it's not like five unit more, you know, it doesn't make a big difference, so. But remember, because this is what is in front of you, you, so you reject that, you know, then this doesn't go back to plan and this is stopped here. So, and we really are, you know, considering, you know, increasing the missing middle and, you know, and to, you know, take care, you know, and be more conscious about the housing crisis that we're having in future, how to bring more inventory, you know, I think we need to, to reevaluate this, this zoning consideration. That is my point.
Just a point of clarification, so we're not able to, are we able to bring an amendment to change it back to the 15 or no?
I haven't heard any amendment.
Yes, you can do that. Okay.
But if you feel comfortable with the 20, you know, so. Okay, so I wanna.
I think it just goes to show that the, like, housing is complicated.
Yes.
And our comp plan has not been fully updated in a long time. The 2019 update was like a refresh, it wasn't really an update. Our zoning code is very old, even smart code, which is newer, is old. We need to take a close look at all of that because housing has changed drastically even in the last five years in terms of what's needed and what's, what's out there. So I think we need to take a whole holistic look. I think this is a step in the right direction. We need something in the middle. I'm actually, I don't care if it's 20 or 15, I really don't. It's like almost not a difference. It's funny, the 15 would be the highest because just because that's not even some cities that wouldn't have been considered missing middle, so I'm fine.
Okay, so all of us in favor of ordinance 2024-0-07 say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And your pose?
Nay.
Okay, Nicola pose, so the motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so next we move to the Board of Public Works, Dave.
I'm gonna have Bill handle these for me tonight since I'm remote.
Okay.
I'll move approval of resolution R13724, approving an agreement number one with FGM Architects for the Police Services Facility. This was approved by the Board of Public Works.
Second. Second by Gabriela, okay? What is this? Did the Board, did the Board of Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Yes.
Did Public Safety and Human Services approve?
Yes, by a two-to-one vote.
Okay, thank you. Tim Bocker is here tonight.
I can cover it.
You can cover for me?
Tim's not covering.
Oh, okay, sorry, Tim.
Tim, I've got this one, unless you're really dying to have it, so.
Okay, so Chad, can you give us an, you know, an update about this?
Yeah, so common council will likely recall that back in February, there was action taken by the council that did not approve the previously, previous schematic design for the police services facility. And the direction that was provided was it was too expensive and could not be afforded at the price in which it was designed. Staff went back, has worked with the architectural design firm to identify what is possible with the money that has been allocated by the common council, which currently stands at 35 million plus $5 million for sustainability improvements for a total project cost of approximately 40 million, which would equate to an approximately 52,000 square foot police services facility. This contract amendment that you had before you this evening authorizes staff as well as the architectural design firm to proceed with schematic design that would be brought forward to identify what specifically the police department would look like and also would allow them to then also complete the design development phase as well. We had a number of conversations with the architectural design firm to arrive at the dollar amount that is listed in this. Obviously, it is not insignificant, but recognizing that there is still basically a new project to be designed with about 50% of previous work that carries over from the previous process.
I have a comment, Chad, because on page 236, you know, they mentioned that the sustainable, sustainability allowance is $3.5 million, but the council approved $5 million in the CIP, so.
Sure, that was put in as a placeholder at this point in time, largely because we don't know what the schematic design is gonna look like. There is a very distinct possibility now that we're transitioning to what will really be technically a two-story building, but only one story visible from street grade because there'll be kind of an exposed lower level. There might be more rough surface area, for instance, that would allow for more solar panel installation than the previous schematic design, which had a more sloped roof to it with a few different designs or angles to the, to the roof, which may not have been as conducive for as many solar panels. We're also looking at things like incorporating perhaps LED fixtures, low-flow plumbing fixtures, those sorts of things, moving mechanicals in from the roof into the building in order to have them last longer and not require ideally as much maintenance or replacement as soon. So there's all kinds of things that we would like to consider as those sustainability improvements.
Thank you. Nicole?
Apologies, I was trying to get to the page when you might have covered this, on page 228 or page 214 of the packet. It doesn't say that if Finance and Public Safety approved. Did you state that both did?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Everyone approved it, yeah. Any other comment, question? Okay, all of us, okay, Jay?
I still find this to be the worst possible location in the city to put this building, so I'm going to vote against it.
Okay, we know that.
Roll call requested.
Roll call, okay. Tracy, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Dancer Jr.?
Yay.
Alder Gerhardt?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado is absent with excuse. Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, next one, Bill.
I'll move approval of resolution R14024, accepting subdivision improvements in the Lacy Ridge Town Homes CSM.
Second.
What is this, Bill?
Board of Public Works approved.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Lacy Ridge Town Homes, it's about three-quarters of a mile east of here, just on the south side of Lacy Road. Back in June of '22, the city and Lacy Ridge Town Homes entered into an agreement for subdivision improvements. The Public Works Department has inspected and conditionally approved the subdivision improvements within this CSM. Tim, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Just that the set improvements in the CSM are completed and will have a 14-month warranty on those improvements.
Okay, I want to, we have a resident who wishes to speak. David Haidt. Hi, David, you have three minutes.
So I want to start with two base facts. The first is that all discharges to waters of the state are regulated under the MS4 permit that's issued to the municipal corporation of the city of Fitchburg. It's not issued to the stormwater utility. It's not issued to the Department of Public Works. And as it is the Clean Water Act, the council has an obligation to have in place a regulatory compliance oversight mechanism, which appears it not have. The second thing that everyone should keep in mind is that amendments to the Dane County, excuse me, Water Quality Plan, the Dane County Water Quality Plan is a Clean Water Act instrument. There's exactly one criteria by which the DNR will approve that, an amendment to add new areas to the plan. That's if water quality standards will be met. Both sides, east and west, feed into wetlands. It's protected by NR 103, which is the wetland water quality standard for Wisconsin. I don't know if anyone on staff was around for the Northeast Neighborhood situation. Greenfield is in both Swan Creek and Murphy's Creek watershed. That's going to be a big issue. So now to the townhomes. So the townhomes feed into and use as their stormwater pond flowages that were created at the crossings, the condominiums there right by the park. Those are Swan Creek. I don't know if anybody's looked at them. I filed complaint too, and I've gotten, we'll fix it. The level of sedimentation in those ponds is higher than what I just happened to see on TV for the Indian floods coming off the Himalayas. This week, I'm going to file with the DNR a complaint for a possible fish kill because I've taken samples and it's higher than that level. So the townhomes, so it was a mistake to put stormwater ponds in the creek itself. So when the DNR comes out and samples for water quality, they're sampling the stormwater ponds in Swan Creek. So the townhomes are given permission to use those ponds as the stormwater ponds exacerbating the problem. Now, I understand they're built, I understand that the agreement is there, but the council should take strong notice of this. I suggest tabling this until the council gets a report about the water quality in Swan Creek and how this decision affects that. It's to your interest to start to begin to exercise some regulatory compliance oversight of the water quality in our community. This would be a great place to start.
Thank you. Tim, can you explain all the procedures and that the developer has to go through, you know, to build those townhomes there? Do we follow every, you know, you know, I am, I am following with David mentioned, so we are following all the protocol about, you know, DNR, you know, all the requirements for a stormwater discharge?
All of the permits were issued for this project for stormwater. The Dane County and the city issued erosion control and stormwater permits. So all the regulations were followed and adhered to in the design and constructed.
So we are not doing any illegal discharge to any, to the creek or to, you know? I want to be sure of that.
No illegal discharges to the creek.
Okay. Any comments?
Do we have, do we have concerns with the current levels? I guess we've, we've heard a decent amount of neighbors from the Greenfield Neighborhood and from other parts of District Four be concerned about stormwater run over and, and management and things like that. And I, I join your concern in just wanting to make sure, like, do we, even if we followed all the process, do we have concerns that what this resolution aims to approve is going to make that situation worse? And, and if we do not have concerns, can you just briefly go over the recourse we have if we do find that they are made worse?
As far as the improvements, they're, they're not going to make anything worse. The Swan Creek has some of the best water quality in, in the area for our watersheds. I can have Ben provide some additional detail to that. I believe a presentation was given at one of the recent RCC meetings about the water quality of that watershed. It is, there's actually a monitoring station there and we regularly monitor that throughout the year and no adverse impacts to the water quality has been shown.
Thank you, Tim.
And I don't know if, oh, sorry. I don't know if you have draw by, but those townhomes are already up and ready, so.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is accepting the subdivision improvements that were part of a written agreement with the developer for this particular project. City staff has inspected and assessed all of the improvements and its compliance with the original agreement. And it's before you now because city staff believes that the requirements of the subdivision improvement agreement have been met and that we are, should be accepting the subdivision improvements at this point.
Okay, all of us in favor of resolution R-140-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Next, Park Commission. Dave?
One second. Okay, so far in our Park Commission, several things we went over. We heard the Emerald Ashboro Management Plan update from Anaheli. He talked about a number of trees we're treating and what we're trying to do and the diversification of our, our city tree stock. I think many of you have seen, we have approved project, the public art display that will go on the fence of the tennis courts at McKee. If you haven't seen that, I think it's very beautiful and, and we discussed that. The Southdale Parks survey is out and the survey went out June 13th. Been gathering feedback and we'll have another neighborhood information meeting to go over, you know, what was found in our plans. You all know about the Fish, the hub, saw that. Chad mentioned the tennis courts. Stoner Prairie Park, we rebid that. And so the, it's bid and we're slating completion in the end of 2025, or summer of 2025 for that. We are near completion of our bid for the Tower Hill Park Shelter refurbishing. That should go out soon, similar with the McKee Farms Park. And there were several projects, Seminole Glen Heights Basketball Court, some path replacements in Wildwood South and Mickelson that you'll hear about in a, in an amendment business at the end. And a few other, not too much more, a few things about other projects. So we, we received a good update from Scott about what's, what is, what is going on. So that's all I had from Parks.
Thank you. Any question for Dave?
Nope.
Okay. So next we move to the Library Board. Jane?
Jim?
Nothing to report.
Nothing? Okay. Commission of Edgingwell?
Only thing I would add is this past Wednesday, some of the orders and myself, we got a chance to present to the members of the senior center. They got to ask questions of their orders in their respective districts, the four of us that were there. And then there'll be another one for the other four orders that didn't attend next Wednesday, August 21st, I believe, is the date. If you can't make it out, I would strongly suggest you go. A great group, provide a lot of energy, good insight, and it's just fun to be around. And I think it's a great way to show yourself in the community.
Thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
Yes, we met last night. We discussed the solid waste contract and rates and those, the contract itself for trash and recycling should be appearing before council sometime in September. And then the, the actual rates, which are, the numbers we saw last night, we're, we're only going to increase a couple of bucks a year. So 233 instead of $230 or something along the lines of that. That, the, the rates will come before us in October. We discussed the, the Week Without Driving, which is September 30th to October 6th, and how the RCC might help promote that. There was a discussion about the Fitchburg Sustainability Plan. It's available on the Pale Blue Dot website. Please go there and read the draft plan. And there's a Google form. You can provide feedback. I urge everybody to do that. There are nine sections, 10 if you include the introduction. And the public comment period is going to close on August 30th for that. So you've got a couple of weeks here to go yet. RCC hosted a Plastic Free July event at Hy-Vee, where they gave away 83 reusable shopping bags to shoppers. As you entered City Hall, and if you've been to the community center, perhaps to vote, because today is voting day, you may have noticed a, a plastic collection box for plastic film. That is a, a company called Nextrex. The Fitchburg Lions Club is, is trying to encourage people to drop off their recyclable plastic bags. And if they collect 1,000 pounds, we can get a, a free bench made out of recycled plastic. Sean Path with the Lions Club is in contact with Pick and Save. And we discussed perhaps reaching out to some of the multifamily housing properties, you know, about placing a box there near large population centers. We got an update from Phil Groupie, who said that the solar inverters are being replaced presently to get our systems back up and running. I think there's a couple of hiccups that we're working through, but that is proceeding. And we are also on track to bump up our Seoul Smart designation as a city. That's a measure of how easy or difficult it is to, to, to get solar photovoltaics on, on buildings. So the, the designation is really about removing any barriers, speeding up permit processes, making things easier to, you know, move things forward quickly. And there's a fall recycling slash shred event scheduled for Saturday, September 14th, from eight o'clock to 11 o'clock in the morning. Volunteer opportunities available.
When?
September 14th.
Oh, September 14th.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question for you, Bill. Do you know what is the percentage of houses in Fitchburg that they have solar panels? Or how many houses, you know?
I don't know that.
Can we get that info or is, or no?
We could check with the Building Inspection Department to see what permits have been issued. That might give us an idea.
Oh, because they need to have a permit to.
Yeah, you need to have a permit, yeah.
Yeah. We do have the total number of households as part of the trash collection contract. So, so if we, if we know the total number of solar installations and the total number of households, then we can get the percentage.
Okay. Ah, okay, okay, okay. Any question for Bill? No? Can you send us a link with a sustainable plan so we can, you know? I think I got that link, but I don't know where that email is.
Yes, I can do that.
To the council, so, okay. Okay, so next we move to Transportation and Transit Commission.
Yes, before I introduce the resolution, I'll just give a brief update. We met last Thursday and we welcomed a new member, Rick Roderick. And next month, we will be welcoming Logan officially. In TTC, we also discussed the Week Without Driving as well as our potential referendum, specifically the $350 transit portion of that referendum. And $350,000, we were told by Transportation Engineer Kaler would include the parrot transit. So anybody who lives within a half a mile of that line can call for a ride if they're not able to walk or, you know, transport themselves to a bus stop. And I don't know whether this will be significant or not, but it was also mentioned that because we are spending more, there's a fixed amount of state aid available. And the more you spend, the bigger your slice of that pie is. So, you know, some amount of that will be offset in state aid.
When you say we are spending more in road maintenance, is that?
No, in, if we, if we spend the additional $350,000 on transit, there are state aids available for transit. And the more you spend, the more state aid you'll get. But I don't know how big it, whether that's going to be significant at all in that $350,000.
Okay.
Transportation Engineer Kaler also walked us through a list of projects that are going to be in design phase or construction in 2025. And that was insightful. I encourage everybody to watch the TTC meeting and see his, see him walk through those slide decks. And we discussed for a future meeting, a template resolution for Vision Zero. And so we've got some homework to, to read up on that in preparation for it. That preamble being done, I will move approval of resolution R 14124, support for the fiscal year 2024 Safe Streets for All grant application for the Greater Madison MPO Regional Safe Streets Community Safety Enhancement Partnership.
Second.
Okay, did the Board of Public Works approve?
Board of Public Works approved.
Did the Transportation and Transit Commission?
TTC approved.
And Finance Committee?
Finance approved.
Thank you. What is this, Bill?
The Greater Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization is submitting a joint grant application for the U.S. DOT's Safe Streets for All Planning and Demonstration Grant Program. So there's two components to the grant money available. One is for planning and demonstration, and the other is for actual implementation of those plans. And so what we're talking about here is the planning and demonstration portion of that. And municipalities that are participating include the villages of Cottage Grove and Shorewood Hills, the cities of Verona, Fitchburg, and Madison, and then Dane County as well. And so this is a, you know, a fairly standard 80/20 split. So this will require a 20% local match. And for the city of Fitchburg, that'll come out of our CIP Project 1045, which is capital grant matching. And every, every participating municipality will have its, operate relatively independently of all the others. So this is really just a, you know, a way to catch the DOT's attention with a larger proposal. And the city of Fitchburg can create a comprehensive safety action plan that'll enable staff and elected officials to make informed decisions regarding funding for roadway safety projects throughout the city. So that'll include things such as leadership commitment and goal setting, planning structures, safety analysis, engagement and collaboration equity, policy and process changes, strategy and project selections, and, and progress and transparency. And our safety action plan would build on existing plans that have been created by the MPO and help enable Fitchburg to work towards an implementation of a Vision Zero policy.
Thank you. Any question, comment? No? All of us in favor of resolution R-141-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So next, Community and Economic Development Authority.
Yeah, we did meet a couple of weeks ago and I don't really have anything to report.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Nothing to report?
No.
So you didn't talk at all? No?
I asked some questions.
Okay, but what it was, nothing?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee?
We meet this next Monday, next week at some, no, Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. It's one of the days of the week. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We meet next Tuesday.
It's a day that ends in Dave.
That's right, Jay.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Joe is absent, but I happen to live with someone who's on that.
Joe is absent, but I happen to live with someone who's on that committee. And I guess the one takeaway that she brought to me was that Jim Denham had, had given some, a bit of a presentation to the commission about pedestrian safety, specifically with regard to visually impaired people.
Okay.
And the major takeaway that, that hit me was, was that roundabouts are very difficult for the blind. There is no designated crossing time for them, and there is no good way for a blind person to know whether a car is approaching.
Okay. Good point. Okay. Thank you. EMS Commission?
Yeah, we're in the process of doing an evaluation for Patrick. So it should be done soon.
Are you working in the budget too, or no? Or you're already done with the budget?
Yeah, we've, we've done that. So it should be coming to council.
Okay. Thank you. Health and Neighborhood Committee?
So we also met last week, and I do have something to report from there. We got our mid-year update from all the organizations that we were funding. There are four organizations that did not present last week. One of them, she was sick and was not able to attend. But the other three, we just heard nothing from, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
We got three we heard nothing from. So as part of the guidelines for qualifying for the grant, the organizations are required to do this mid-year update, and these three just didn't. So my suspicion at this point is that we will probably have some funds that don't get dispersed this year that will carry over to next year.
Are we following up with them to see if they are?
Deanna, I was just looking to see if Deanna was still on line, and she was gonna do that, but I don't, I haven't heard anything. This was just last week.
I can ask her to do that.
Well, she, she said she was going to, so I, I believe she will.
That's it?
And that's it. That's, that was our entire meeting.
Housing Advisory Committee?
We met yesterday. First, I'll mention that Joyce sent out, Joyce Frazer sent out an email.
Oh, yeah.
Was it Friday?
Yeah.
It's called Efficiency Navigator Prioritization Questionnaire. And this is homework for everybody on the council that has already filled it out. It is actually very easy homework. It's just three questions that will take you about three minutes, maybe less, to do. So I highly encourage you to respond to her. She wants it by Friday noon. It's basically, as the sustained Dane, they've done a whole bunch of analysis and they've had apartments apply for the, the energy efficiency grant money. And really, the questionnaire is about how we want to prioritize that money. Do you want it to go more to sustainability? Do you want it to go more to, to like cost savings? It's kind of things of that nature. So please take a look and fill it out and return Joyce's email before Friday at noon. Also, I forwarded a, a report earlier today. I guess a new report just came out from the National Association of Home Builders called the Homes, Housing Supply Accelerator Playbook, which I thought, I just took a quick look at it. It seemed interesting, had some case studies about other communities. So I passed that along to you in case you want to check it out. At our meeting yesterday, we had an introduction to Lori Engage, who was our new housing specialist, and really excited to have her. She's got a really interesting background as an educator, in, as a Realtor, and in different housing organizations like Moving Out and, what was the other one? Yeah, several different housing organizations. So she's got a really interesting housing background, is really passionate. We're very excited to have her. We also did kind of just a very general conversation about the regional housing strategy, housing priorities, like how do we, and kind of discussing big picture, how was it, as a committee, do we want to continue moving forward with making recommendations outside of the recommendations that they have already made, and how to implement the housing strategy? So we had, we had a conversation about a whole bunch of different things that could, it's very wide ranging. So I will send that out to you so that you can take a look and watch it. There was some discussion, Brian McKee shared some things from a, from a developer perspective about what's, what's restricting developers from, from developing in the area, which was pretty interesting. Mike talked a lot about, Mike and Joyce talked a lot about the history of housing that they've done, how they've developed it over the years, and kind of what the, what the stepwise plan to move forward, which includes finishing the neighborhood plans, launching a major comp plan update, a zoning update, and then other maybe specific updates in addition to things like how to, how to, how to apply the money. We will be having a presentation in September about housing initiatives, so please, 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 don't miss the September meeting. It will be a very important one. And I think that discussion, and when I say September meeting, I mean the September committee, the whole meeting, which I believe is on September 25th. But we're having a long conversation about housing, and I think it'll be really important for everyone to be there. And that's all. Thanks.
Landmark and Preservation Commission?
We have nothing on our agenda right now.
Tree Advisory Committee?
We have not met since the last council.
Community Equity Committee?
We are currently in the process of working through our mission and business statements and finding a additional chair, because Dane had to step away for other commitments that she had throughout the summer. So I'm sure we'll get another great community member to replace her. But the work is moving forward and doing a lot of exciting things. So as we craft, finish, finish crafting those statements, I'll definitely report out and get them back to the council.
Thank you, Donald. Okay. So now we move to item number nine, Standing Committee Reports. Finance Committee, anything else you want to add, Gabriela?
Everything should have, was covered in the mayor and the administrator's report. Nothing to add.
Personnel Committee?
We are meeting again soon, as you stated in your report, with those police and fire negotiation meetings to be held in that committee as well.
Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
Well, we approved a bunch of party permits in the parks, sound permits. And just a reminder that the Ironman is coming up on September 7th and 8th. They will be using streets throughout the city. So check the city's website to see if it's going to affect you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And then we move to unfinished business. We don't have anything. And then we move to 11, new business. This is a direct referral. Public Works?
I'll move approval of Resolution R 14524, approving change order number one for the 2024 street resurfacing project.
Second.
Okay. Did the Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Oh, thank you. What is this?
So our, as noted earlier in our meeting, the street resurfacing project is largely complete. And per Public Works Director Volker, we've had favorable rates. And so we're asking for an additional $50,000-ish to do a couple more tasks with that same, same contractor. So it'll be 0.4 miles of multi-use path through Wildwood South, Mickelson Woods, and Quarry Hill, and then two half basketball courts in Seminole Glen and Hillside Heights Parks.
Okay. Any question, comment? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution R dash 145 dash 24, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next we move to item 12, Alder District Report. So I will start with this 34.
Okay. So Jim and I, I'm, I'm including Jim in my update. Jim and I both want to echo what Chad was saying about thanking all the poll workers and Tracy for all of the work that's being done to support the election. Also, we've spent a good amount of time the past couple of weeks talking to our Greenfield neighbors, and we really appreciate all the feedback. And we're making sure that we're talking to neighbors and getting input and feedback, and kind of doing that as a team to really make sure folks are well represented. The only other thing that hasn't been covered in the updates, Chad kind of spoke to it, but anyone asking about Osmondson and Seminole Roads, they are not done. They will not be that bumpy. There is a second Topcoat coming. One of those people complained, including my husband, who said he almost fell on his bike. That's okay. They're not going to be left that way. So anyone who's worried, don't be worried. That's all.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, just to echo Nicole, we are working on Greenfield. I've met with an individual, and then I'll be doing that walk. I am in constant contact with Deanna, looking at how things could be set up. So there's, there's a lot of work being put into this by Nicole and I. So just wanted people to know that. Also, I should have said it during my update for the EMS Commission, but I just sent out the survey that Dane County sends out every year. And take a look at that and you can see how Fitchrona measures up the other EMS departments.
I, I had the opportunity to drive through Greenfield, a couple of, I usually do that. On weekend, I'd like to drive the city. So I went to Greenfield, you know, because sometimes you need to visualize stuff, you know what I mean? So if you can do the walking, maybe you can bike or try to, yeah. Donna, 3.
I would just echo Nicole and thanking all of the, the poll workers today for all of their hard work on today's primary election. Again, just if you can, make it over to the senior center next Wednesday. I went last week, but you'll have Jay on next Wednesday talking a bit, talking a little bit about District 3. And other than that, I don't think I have any further updates from the district. If Jay, you have anything?
No, all is quiet and well in District 3 right now.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. There's construction and a couple of new buildings that keeps progressing and adding stuff to the tax base hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you. District 2?
I'll, I'll start with some Fitchburg science updates. Shine Fusion Technologies that has the facility in District 3. They do fusion, and they actually had an article in Science Magazine this month about that. And they mentioned Fitchburg, Wisconsin, so it's pretty cool. So anyway, it's worth checking out. Shine is just a really fascinating company. We're lucky to have them. The other really interesting science company in, in Fitchburg, although there are many, but another cool one is Kamika, which they make atom probes, which actually like literally images things at the atomic scale. They are having an expansion ribbon cutting on Wednesday, August 21st, next week, which I cannot attend, and I am very sad, but for those of you that can, it's a very cool facility. I've been there once before, fortunately, and hope I can go again. Another repeat of what's been said before, but McKee Farms Park, there is the Community Night Out that the police are hosting tomorrow, Wednesday, October, August, sorry, Wednesday, August 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., McKee Farms Park. Please come out and join. There's also the ribbon cutting for the new tennis courts at McKee Farms Park. That's going to be this Friday, August 16th, 3:30, at 3:30 p.m. So, and, and they are open now in case you want to play. They are open. I also saw that there's a cool Dane County landfill open house this weekend.
What?
August 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Is that this weekend? No, no, no. That's next weekend. No, it's this weekend, sorry. Yeah, Saturday, August 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., there is a open house at the Dane County landfill, and the landfill is really cool if you've never been. I highly recommend. I'm serious. That sounds like a joke, but it's actually very cool. So if you want to check it out, it's a good time to go. Sorry. I guess that's another sort of science nerd thing for, for today. And then last thing I wanted to thank Public Works. There is a stretch on Chapel Valley where there's a curve in the road and there's a cross rock right in the middle of it. And Public Works, we, we actually voted to create no parking in that area, but people continued to park because they were used to it, and obviously continued to create that, that visual obstruction to endanger pedestrians. And so Public Works went out and actually painted that yellow. I know that's something they don't really like doing as a general rule, because it's a pain in the butt to keep that up to date. But I think for this intersection, it was important, and I want to thank them for making that happen. I've already heard from the residents that they feel much, much more comfortable crossing that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Which intersection was that?
It's not quite an intersection. It's like Chapel Valley Curves. It's like right past Brendan Road. There's a curve, and then there's a cross rock right in the middle of the curve.
Sure.
People use it frequently, so, because it goes to the park.
Right.
Bill?
Well, Gabriela is still everybody's thunder, I suppose. Just a couple items here. On Sunday was the Ride the Drive event in Madison, where they shut down the streets, John Nolan Drive and Williamson Street and Part of Region Street. That was, that was quite an event. The Bike Fitchburg will have a bike rodeo at tomorrow's Community Night Out. So if you are a child or an adult who wants.
Oh, really?
To learn how to ride a bike, stop on by. And I noticed this morning, this was, so this was kind of interesting, the first three people in line at my polling place this morning had all ridden their bikes. And we lamented the fact that there was no bike parking.
Where in the, out there?
Yeah, Wyndham Garden. But, so the, the city has six polling places. Two of them have bike parking. So perhaps.
Maybe you need to think for next year, CIP.
Indeed. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. Dave?
On Saturday, our, our L.A. Drive, Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association is having a backpack giveaway, and, and there'll be food and activities for kids, I believe it's from 11:00 to 1:00 at the, the park, the L.A. Drive Park. I wanted to thank Public Works or the city for putting up the sign, the light board in Jamestown Heagle, advertising the Community Night Out that's happening at McKee Farms Park. Thank you for advertising that in, in our district. I'm working on, with two different neighborhoods or two different streets on some traffic calming, still working through getting enough signatures. And I think there was one other, oh, I wanted to pass along, you know, to Tim and Chad, you know, I got some really good feedback from residents about Tracy, Tracy Gold and, and, Tracy Gold, Tracy, I'm sorry, I'm old, but she helped clean up a bunch of things that were left over from some construction in a, in a neighborhood. And I just want to make sure you, you thank her, you know, I, it's nice to get comments from neighborhood, from neighbors, you know, thanking the city for doing a good job, I think, as Alders. You know, we get quite a few the other way. So when, when we do get these, we want to make sure those city employees are, are recognized. So that's all I had.
Thank you. And I want to make another announcement tomorrow is Luna Block Party is August 24. It's in District, well, it's kind of borderline District 1 with City of Madison. So everyone is invited. And then I want to announce that one of our company here in Fitchburg, Playcon, wins the 2024 Ameristar Award. So it's, it's an award for developing an specialized series of sandwich and wrap container for farmer fridge. So this is a company here in District 4, isn't it? So, so congratulations to Playcon.
District 1.
Oh, 1. Okay. Sorry, Dave. So maybe we should send them. Yeah, we should send it like a note, you know? Okay. Okay. So that's it. So next, our next common council meeting will be August 27. And our next committee of the whole meeting is August 28. What is the topic of, what is the agenda, Gabriela?
We're not certain, but we definitely will be talking about the emergency management.
Okay.
We haven't decided the second one. I'm sorry. Emergency medical service. Thank you for that question.
Thank you. And, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Buenas noches a todos. Thank you.